We're on Old Castle Road at Forester Road, the site of our new fire station that's about to be underway and construction. This station took up several fire stations' territories to give us a little relief on responses. It will go over to Dallas-Aquitheway area. It will go down to 61 North, and it'll go over all the way to the industrial park and part of Gullage Road back towards Seven Hills. So it's going to cover a lot of territory. There's a little over 4,500 residents, a lot of development still going on in the county. So we're trying to get ahead of the game a little bit here. We've been planning this for a while, but we expect a lot more growth out here. So we're trying to get this station built, get that going. I would compare this one to Station 12, which was the last one we built. It's just west of Dallas. It's the same floor plan. We liked it. It's functional, it's good and serviceable for the firefighters, but we are putting a battalion chief here, so we did expand that a little bit for a battalion chief office. We'll have one engine company here, and there'll be three firefighters assigned here per shift, which are 24-hour shifts. This station will be open 24 hours, 365/7. Right now, they're calling for completion to be January the 10th, which is not too far away, January 10th of 2025. Thank you for allowing us in your community, to be able to serve in your community. We know it's been a long time coming. We want to give you a little break on your insurance rates for some of you with ISO ratings, so we're looking forward to doing that. And of course, if you need us, we're going to be there.
So we are in downtown Dallas, and so this is the 11th Annual Run with the Badges 5K Glow Run, which is being hosted by Paulding Public Safety Appreciation. So this is an exciting year because it's our 11th year, but it's our first year in downtown Dallas. So for the previous 10, we were up in the Seven Hills, North Paulding Community, and then we had great success up there, but the traffic and just the growth up there just made it difficult to close roads down for so long. So we partnered with the city of Dallas, and we were very fortunate that they allowed us to host here in downtown Dallas. As you can see, there's tons of people here. The turnout's great. We're still, as you can see behind me, people are still registering, but we're going to have over 600 runners run tonight, so we're super excited about this opportunity. We've got Chuck Martin and his band here tonight. We've got a DJ playing music, so it's just a great community event. People are able to come out, they're able to relax. The weather's actually perfect. It was really hot this afternoon, but the shades rolled in. Paulding Public Safety Appreciation was started in 2009, and it's basically, it's a group of citizens and public safety members, and our goal is to raise money, and this is our biggest fundraiser of the year, but our goal is to raise money, and what we do with that money is we help public safety personnel in times of need. So public safety personnel who either live or work in Paulding County, when they fall in hard times, PPSA is kind of like Aflac for public safety. It's just a great opportunity to give back to our brave men and women who are our first responders here in Paulding County. Go to ppsa.org, which is our website. You can go check it out. You can donate, you can find out more about the run. We have a couple other events that we're looking at. We're actually thinking about hosting a golf tournament this fall to raise some money. So lots of good things happening. It's a 501(c)(3), so all your donations are tax deductible, so it's just a great opportunity to give back to your community.
Today couldn't have turned out any better. This is our 21st year of hosting this event. All of our vendors showed up. We have great representation from throughout the county, local businesses, and we have some new vendors from outside of the county who wanted to be a part of the event. The weather's been nice, and we have one of the largest turnouts that we've ever had, so today's been a great success. Just want to give a huge thank you to all of our vendors, all of our public safety people that came out. We have great representation today from public safety, our county departments, really the public for coming out today and spending a little time with us. This is our largest event of the spring, and the rest of our county staff that has volunteered to come out today and help us out.
Welcome to Larry C. Ragstil White Oak Park located in Paulding County, Georgia. This park features several tranquil lakes, vibrant playgrounds, and plenty of recreational activities, including a walking trail for everyone to enjoy.
From tranquil lakes to vibrant playgrounds, our park offers a plethora of amenities for you and your family to enjoy. Whether you're seeking adventure on our disc golf course, basking in the sun at our sand volleyball court, or simply taking a leisurely stroll along our walking trails, there's something here for everyone. For more information or to plan your visit, please call the Parks Administration Office at 770-445-8065. Larry C. Ragstil White Oak Park, where memories are made and nature thrives.
Welcome to Mount Tabor Park located in Paulding County, Georgia. This park offers a variety of recreational facilities and plenty of outdoor activities for everyone to enjoy.
From our serene half-acre lake to the abundance of recreational facilities, Mount Tabor Park offers an array of opportunities for outdoor fun and relaxation. Get your heart pumping in our aerobics room, gym, or on our exhilarating mountain bike trail. There's something for everyone to enjoy. Take a leisurely stroll along our scenic walking trail, or let the little ones burn off some energy at our playground. For more information and to discover our upcoming programs and classes, please call Mount Tabor Park at 770-505-3885, or visit our website to register online. Mount Tabor Park, where nature meets recreation and memories are made.
Welcome to Mulberry Rock Park located on the south side of Paulding County, Georgia. This park offers scenic walking trails, a great playground for children to enjoy, multipurpose fields, and plenty of outdoor recreational activities.
With amenities like our enclosed pavilion, multipurpose fields, and three miles of scenic pedestrian trails, Mulberry Rock Park provides the perfect backdrop for your outdoor adventures. Explore our community garden, let the kids unleash their imagination at the playground, or gather with friends and family at one of our five-group pavilions for a memorable day in nature. Embrace the tranquility of Mulberry Rock Park as you stroll along the pedestrian trails or enjoy a picnic at one of our single-table shelters. For more information or to plan your visit, please call the Parks Administration Office at 770-445-8065. Mulberry Rock Park, where every moment is an opportunity to connect with nature and create cherished memories.
Good morning, everyone. I've got exactly 10 o'clock, and it's so good to have you here with us this morning to participate in county government. I'd like to call the Paulding County Work Session for April, it's not April, it's August 27th to order at this time. If you've got a mobile device, be a good time to turn that off. And get Brian to bring the list forward, please, one of our favorite marshals. Is that right, Chief? Thanks, sir. Very delighted this morning to have the Paulding County FCA Director bring us our invocation and lead us in the pledge, Mr. Jason Cathy. Thank you for being here, Jason.
I'm honored. Thank you for asking me. Recently, I was asked, when I was talking to a coach about how can I pray for you, he said, "Pray for my time," and I think all of us can relate to that for, you know, the way we manage it. So let's just hear a little bit about what the Lord says real quick before we go into a time of prayer. In Ephesians 5, it says, "Look carefully then how you walk, not as unwise, but as the wise, making the best use of the time, because the days are evil. Therefore, do not be foolish, but understand what the will of the Lord is." And in Psalm 90:12, it says, "So teach us to number our days, that we might get a heart of wisdom." And we know that wisdom is knowledge and experience put into practice. You can know a lot of things, you can experience a lot of things, but what do you do with it after? And for a lot of us, we experienced great sadness last week as we continue to pray for our community and for the sheriff's office. I wanted to share this quick poem before we pray. "In the spring of 1864, battle exploded on the outskirts of Richmond, and after the fighting ended, one party came upon a Confederate soldier who lay amid the dead in the front line of the battle. And before burying him on the field, the gravediggers made the usual search of the body, and inside the shirt pocket was a sheet of paper, where this common soldier, who was unidentified, had written these thoughts. I asked for God for strength, that I might achieve; I was made weak, that I might learn humbly how to obey. I asked Him for health, that I might do greater things; I was given infirmity, that I might do better things. I asked for riches, that I might be happy; I was given poverty, that I might be wise. I asked Him for power, that I might have the praise of men; I was given weakness, that I might feel the need for God. I asked for all things, that I might enjoy life; I was given life, that I might enjoy all things. I got nothing that I asked for, but everything I had hoped for. Almost despite myself, my unspoken prayers were answered. I am among all men most richly blessed." We thank you for our spouses and our kids, which are yours first put on loan to us, Lord. We thank you for every relationship and little slice of influence that you've blessed us with. We thank you for the way that you provide, Lord. Your Word tells us that you are our provider. Lord, help us to remember to worship you as the provider and not the provision itself. Help us to manage our time to honor you and to remember that that time is numbered on this planet. But, Lord, we know that with you, we can live forever, so help us to honor you in our choices. In Jesus' name, amen. I'll pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Jason. Those wonderful words enrich us this morning. The minutes of the August 13th, 2024 Work Session, and also the minutes of the regular board meeting on the same day are available for your review. If you haven't found those before, they're on that back credenza. Announcements, Team Paulding Tribute to Deputy Brandon Cunningham is what we're going to see together today. Announcements, Team Paulding Tribute to Deputy Brandon Cunningham is what we're going to see together today. Thank you, Jeff Harkins and Philip Todd, your team, for putting that together. Love the music you selected. Also like to recognize Sheriff Gullidge and City Councilwoman Doris Debbie for being with us here today. I have no invited guests. Bid awards, item two is discuss action to approve the purchase of one replacement wheel loader, a Caterpillar Model 938 from Yancey in the amount of $296,000. And Ms. Pollard is going to tell us a little bit more about it.
Good morning. Thank you. That was a tough one to follow. So first, I want to say thank you to all our first responders. On behalf of just myself and along with everybody else, I hope that they know that they're appreciated in everything that they do. So all our firefighters, our police officers, I myself definitely appreciate them. So this item is a wheel loader for the landfill. It's used to pack trash. We have two loaders, and Tanya's here as well, just in case I mess something up, because we've got quite a few vehicle or quite a few equipment purchases today. But we have two wheel loaders out there. We rotate them through. This one is about an '03 or an '09. I don't, one is '03 and the other is '09. We've got two pieces of equipment today. So we've seen a lot of life. This one is breaking. It's not, this is the second one. So this has been used for the backup for a while, because we purchased one in, I believe, 2017 or 2018. And so this is to replace, and then, so we'll take our newer one, move it down to a backup, and then use this one for a replacement. So it's very much needed. As I've mentioned, I think one of them's standing in the shop. It's unreparable at this time. And the purchase is being made off of the state contract. So as you know, the state, I believe it's a source will contract. They bid out purchases such as this, so they give other vendors the opportunity, and then that contract is awarded on a statewide basis or on a, according to the source will contract. So that's our bidding requirements, and so we're recommending award to Yancey in the amount of $296,684 for the wheel loader.
And item three, I guess I could read three and four together. Item three is discuss action to approve the purchase of one replacement backhoe, a Caterpillar 416 from Yancey, also in the amount of $109,763. And then item four is discuss action to approve the purchase of the Freightliner M2106 single axle dump truck from Peach State Truck in the amount of $129,414.
So number three is also for the landfill. It's backhoe to move trash. So we pack trash and we move trash out there. Same thing. They have basically rotating the equipment, very similar situation to the one, to number two. And the purchase is being made off this horse wheel contract as well to Yancey in the amount of $109,763.
And item five is discuss action to approve the budgeted 2024, 47 vehicle purchased. A Hardy Family Ford is listed in this spreadsheet at the top of the next page.
Okay. I'm going back up to number four because we haven't, I didn't complete that one yet. And Ms. Gallaway, did you have a question?
I did. I just wondered, a lot of times we put the source of the funding for this. Is this out of the budget or is this splopped?
Well, the landfill operates as an enterprise fund, but it doesn't, basically the funding covers the operations of the facility. So this, the general fund actually had funds in to transfer over, so this purchase is being made through the general fund. And number, or two and three are. Number four is a Freightliner. This was for a budgeted request from Stormwater. They actually requested to replace the 750 flatbed, and we are replacing those with these Freightliners for durability. Tanya can give you more exactly what the reasons are for that, but it's been recommended that this is the type of vehicle that we use for the single axle dump. And we're purchasing it off of the state contract pricing in the amount of $129,414. It is a replacement vehicle and it is general fund as well. And now to the big one for number five. So normally what we would do after the budget's approved is we would bring vehicles back in pieces. So we would award, here lately, we've ordered all F-150s at one time because that's when the order window's open. Then we would order, we would place 250s, and they would come before you in that manner. Well, the order window for everything is open right now, and we don't know when the next order window will be. And between those order windows usually changes models, so your price increase occurs. So if you waited on another order window, the price would more than likely be higher than what is, we're available, able to do now. Not sure why things keep going up, but they do. Vehicles are included. So this is a list of 47 vehicles that were included in the budget in some way, form, or fashion. The, it includes the sheriff's Explorer PPVs. Those are usually splopped purchases. Those are splopped purchases. That's what would be used here. So we have a combination of splopped, usual, your public safety vehicles primarily are using splopped dollars on this list. And the other vehicles are being purchased with general fund dollars, except for the water. And the water vehicles are being purchased using enterprise dollars.
Any questions for Tabitha?
And as we've done in the past as well, we have the state contract pricing. Hardy has matched or beat the state contract pricing, and so we're recommending award to Hardy. That is advantageous to our fleet department when they're trying to pick vehicles up, getting vehicles delivered, warranty work on vehicles, and back and forth to the dealership.
And Tabitha, some of the vehicles going through Hardy, they come in actually less than state pricing, I notice, in the backup?
Yes.
And going through that. So we're actually less than state prices.
That's correct. We don't award to Hardy just because Hardy's closed. We make them, they're very competitive, and so they take the state contract pricing and they'll beat it by some amount. Sometimes it's a dollar, and sometimes it's $500. But they'll beat whatever they can do to beat that pricing is what the pricing that they give us. Thank you.
And we save additional money by not having to, over time, by not having to drive out of the county for service. Is that what I heard you say?
That's correct.
The vehicles that are funded through the general fund, Tabitha, were they in the 2024 budget or the new budget?
They're in the 2025 budget.
2025.
These are 2025 purchases.
Thank you very much. Under reports from committees and departments, we have none this morning. Public participation on agenda items. Mr. Steve West on the conditions changed on zoning at Ridge Road.
Good morning. Thank you for a moment to speak with you on the topic. First of all, I just want to say, following the video we saw a moment ago on what's gone on in this county in the last week with the fallen officer, it seems fairly trivial, the things that we're dealing with at this level. And to your Ephesians 5 comment a minute ago, I know that passage ends with, "Understand what the will of the Lord is, your sanctification." And when I sit here and look at what we're dealing with, it's, I got a long way to go. But I just want to, as it relates to our issue at hand, first of all, I'll say thank you to the county. The staff members and several of the county commissioners have invested a good bit of time in this issue, and the county manager and others. And it's a pretty small issue in the scheme of things. It's a turning lane. But in the world we work in, sometimes those small issues can be pretty big issues in terms of the lives and the livelihoods of the people that are trying to build things, and that's the case here. I guess I wanted to just say that throughout the process, we came to a point where we found a compromise point, which was to build a right side bypass lane that met all of the requirements that the DOT would have. It would be affordable for the people who would have to construct it, and it would be effective for the people who drive that road every day to not have to wait behind somebody who needs to take a left turn onto Rayleigh Road from Ridge Road. And so it feels like to me, after a number of months of work and time and energy invested by a lot of people, we have a win-win situation. Everybody wins here. The residents who drive that road will win. The people who are developing the properties and the businesses will win. And the time that's been invested in trying to find a suitable solution will have been achieved. And so I know it's, the easy thing to do would be just to say no. No harm in doing that from your position, but I think, given the energy that's been expended in trying to find a way to meet the needs of everybody involved, it would be well appreciated on our part if you would consider the compromise that was suggested and approve a right bypass lane as opposed to leaving the existing left turn lane requirement in place or waiving it. So that would be our request. Thank you for your time today. And if you have any questions or want to discuss, we're certainly available.
Thank you. Under the consent agenda, it's consideration of the following consent agenda items. Item six is to authorize the chairman to sign the encroachment easement indemnification and hold harmless agreement with the Seven Hills Homeowners Association and property owners of Lot 973. This is for the retaining wall located partially on and over Paulding County right of way on Azalea Crossing. This is located in post four. Item number seven is to adopt the Department of Transportation job description for a construction inspector right of way. Would any of the commissioners like to move item six or seven to regular business, to new business? Hearing no comment on that, we'll leave them in the consent agenda. Moving into old business, item eight is 2024-02 SPSA. Tabled from July 23rd, 2024 Board Meeting, it's application by Joel L. Larkin at Sam's Larkin and Huff LLP, requesting to remove rezoning stipulation number 13 from the prior rezoning case 2005-51-Z, which required the construction of a left turn lane from Ridge Road onto Rayleigh Road. The site includes an auto parts store, a restaurant, a beverage liquor store, and an outlot. Property is located in Land Lot 261, Section 261, District 1, Section 3, south side of Ridge Road, the east side of Ridgeway Drive, and the west side of Rayleigh Road in post two. Recommendation from the Planning Commission was denial with a vote of four, zero, and one. Are you going to talk on this one, Chris?
Good morning.
Good morning.
This, this application, which is, they're asking, or they're seeking a stipulation amendment from a prior rezoning. It was in 2005. It was stipulation 13 that when this property, Ridge Road and Rayleigh Road and Ridgeway was rezoned to commercial, it, the stipulation required a left turn lane off of Ridge Road on the Rayleigh Road. They're seeking to remove that stipulation, and this was heard by the Planning Commission. They recommend denial. Since then, there has been some discussions and such, and a recommendation from the DOT that gave an option that there could be a right bypass lane.
How would you enter that bypass lane if you're traveling east?
If you're traveling east, it will be no effect on it. It's when you're coming from, on Ridge Road to the west, like you're going to the Publix, you would bump out to the right. Similar, similar if you're heading south at, like you're going to the park off of 61, there's a little right lane that goes off the state highway, just in case somebody's making a left.
Guess I'm ignorant, but, and you and I talked about this yesterday. But if you need to turn south, turn left, but this access lane is going to be to the right?
What it would mean is if you're heading west, George, you're What it would mean is if you're heading west, George, if you're heading west on Ridge Road and you're going to turn in to, say, the... Go to the O'Reilly's that's under construction there, there would not be a left turn to turn in on Rayleigh Road. The stipulation requires that there be a left turn there. This would be... This right bypass that Mr. West talked about would... If you're making a left turn, you'd still stop in the main lane. If somebody's behind you and they wanted to continue going west, they would just go around you to the right.
Okay. So it's those people that don't want to turn into O'Reilly's? They want to keep going?
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
So how long would this right lane bump out be? Because sometime, let's say, two or three or four cars are backed up to turn into a restaurant. There's a restaurant back there that's kind of on a schedule, so lunchtime or dinnertime or whenever that restaurant serves. There may be more than one car. Is it going to account? I'm not sure who to direct that.
I would have to refer to Mr. Jones.
These bump outs, we have a couple in the county. There's two on Dallas-Aquithrway, Highway 1 at Industrial Boulevard, the south entrance. There's also another one going past the Ace Hardware Store towards crossroads. We have one on East Paulding Drive going into a subdivision about maybe a half a mile, you know, past the New Hope area. Typically, I believe it's about a hundred-foot area where you have full-width storage, and then you have a taper going in about 100 feet or so, and then a taper going out about 100 feet. So you're talking around 300 feet of impacted area.
So that would account for a line of even five or six cars?
More than one, definitely. It counts for two to three type vehicles, I guess.
So how long is the access road, and how long would... As compared to the left turn?
Yeah, I would just say it's different because, again, with a left-turn lane, you have a dedicated storage area that is on the main highway. Essentially, the left-turning vehicles are removed from the through traffic. They're in a dedicated lane, so the through traffic keeps going through. Whereas a bump out, a person is stopped, and the through-traffic veers right slightly to go around those left-turn vehicles that are stopped. In this case, that would go onto Rayleigh Road. So think of it this way: the through movement vehicles, with a dedicated left-turn lane, they keep going through. In this case, with a right bump out, they have to turn slightly to the right to get around those left-turning vehicles that are stopped.
And this is what DOT recommends?
That was an option that we recommended if the board was going to waive the left-turn lane requirement, yes.
Any other questions, comments?
So George, I hate to put you on the spot like this, but what are your recommendations, the turn lane or the bump out?
You know, based on the study, the study parameters, we recommended going with the right bypass. I mean, it did not meet the requirements for a left-turn lane at this time. It was four short. Again, we've talked numerous times. You know, these are all traffic projections. Could be a little bit more, could be a little less. But based on the study, the study parameters, that was what we recommended.
Thank you.
Everybody good?
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right, moving into new business. Item nine is discuss action to adopt ordinance 24-10, amending Chapter 22 of the Paulding County Code to update its provisions regarding the Cemetery Preservation Commission, the county attorney, Mr. Jason Phillips.
Commissioners, I'm happy to report that the Cemetery Preservation Committee met for the first time in 20-plus years last week. The role of the Cemetery Preservation Commission is to do an inventory of the cemeteries within Paulding County and to identify their locations and to identify their conditions and which are in need of rehab and repair, and to present to you a priority list indicating which are most in need of those things. First meeting, again, was a week or two ago. They plan on meeting monthly for the ongoing future. And as doing that, we went through some housekeeping, and we recommend that the Cemetery Preservation Commission ordinance be... is updated in two primary regards. The first is you have these commission members who are... Right now, each of them serves a year term. On December 31, those terms expire automatically, and those appointments are vacated at that point in time. By doing this amendment, those appointments will continue until their successors are appointed. That is the standard practice for most appointments. But occasionally, we find a position as a vacancy that's created by the end of term. So these will hold over and continue by this amendment. We've reduced some language in the ordinance, which is duplicative. And finally, we have stricken using Robert's Rules of Order as the procedure mechanism for the commission. That is certainly my recommendation. Robert's Rules of Order is a great thing, but it's also 800-plus pages long. And unless you're running a general assembly or something of that nature, I think that we can come up with some simpler procedures to utilize. So that's my recommendation on the amendments. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
But you've got to admit, Robert's Rules of Order is riveting reading.
It is riveting, and if you are not in the mood to fall asleep, maybe you should pull it up at night and take a read through. It's quite a document. It's an institution in America. But it is certainly something that has its time and place, and we don't know that this commission has that time or place.
Thank you. Item 10 is discuss action to approve change order number one for Croy Engineering, the amount of $21,670 for the construction administration and third-party materials testing for the Mount Tabor Park driveway relocation project. The funding is from SPOST, special purpose local option sales tax funds. It's located in Post 1. Mr. Justice to report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You are all familiar with the Mount Tabor driveway relocation project and the reasons behind that. Part of the project will include some work along East Paulding Drive there. Normally, the third-party testing is not something that you want your contractor to do. You know, you want a third party to do that, to make sure that the road is suitable. The soils underneath are suitable for the roadways that are going to happen on it. The easiest thing to do here is to just do the change order instead of going through and doing maybe two different purchase orders. It'll be managed by Croy, who's our engineer of record, and the testing will actually be done by NOVA. We've used them many times in the past. The majority of that $21,000 will go to NOVA for the testing. And obviously, you know, that will be an amount that we won't go beyond. So that testing will consist of soils testing and ground compaction and the like. So we would certainly recommend your approval of this change order number one.
Questions, comments for Michael?
Michael, is there any... Can you give me any idea or schedule on when that project's going to begin?
The notice to proceed has been issued. We were expecting them last week, but a few things came up on the other end that have prohibited that. We're expecting them any day now. The goal is to have it through before the weather turns. I don't know that they will make that. They're kind of planning ahead, preparing us that they may not. I know here that in Georgia, in November, the weather, you know, you could still... I'm not Mr. Jones. I'm not DOT. It seems to me like it'd be warm enough for, you know, for that smaller project to continue. But hopefully, it will. If not, then they would have to wait to top it, probably in the spring when the weather turns. But the road will be passable, you know, during that time. It'll just be coming back and topping it off. Yes, sir.
I don't know if I should ask this or not, Michael. Come back. Talked to you offline, but why wouldn't we use DOT to check these materials? Our DOT. All right. Appreciate you guys.
I'm glad Mr. Jones answered that.
Well, thank both of you.
Yes, sir.
Item 11 is discuss action to approve the change order to the Motorola P-25 radio project in the amount of $590,311.34 to be paid from SPOST funds. Mr. Mumford.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We'll try to work through this without me losing my voice completely. In November of '22, the board commissioners awarded Motorola Solutions the contract to replace our current radio system with a public safety-grade P-25 radio system. This agenda item is a change order to that original contract in the amount of $691,807.47. In February, you approved $101,496.13 of this amount for the beefing up of the site up at Richland Creek to carry three cellular carriers once we put that out to bid. So the actual amount that we're approving today, we're asking for approval on is $590,311.34. The change order was originally for a little over $1.6 million. We negotiated that down to the current change order amount through the county and TUSA Consulting. And then this also extends the project timeline. It was supposed to end in June of '24. This extended the project timeline out to December 31 of '25. That's when the project will end. The anticipated go-live date, when we'll actually put the system into service, will be mid-June, early July of 2025. But the project won't end until the end of December. We have system testing and acceptance testing and burn-in times and other things that are within that time period. We'll actually be using the system by July, as long as everything goes according to plan. The original contract amount was $39,832.832.78. And now with this change order, the new contract price is $40,523,885.47. The change order document encompasses about 17 smaller change orders into one document. And so what they ran into, for instance, it's the cost of having to locate sites. We've moved sites around, and they were doing engineering studies at one site, for example, and then they had to do it again. And so that's encompassed into this. We've ran into rock just about everywhere. We've tried to put a tower site, Richland Creek, and over at the Sheriff's Home and Training Center in particular. There was an estimated 450 cubic yards to 500 cubic yards of rock over Richland Creek that the Water Department has helped us graciously move off to get rid of those. But in order to get the foundation and the propane tanks, which are underground, and all the tower foundations, the building foundations, we had to break that much rock to get into those. There's also... There's increases in steel and concrete that happened from the time the contract was signed until now. Those are encompassed in this. There's increases in some fencing cost. Our subscriber units, which are the portables and the mobile radios that our units will use, those, actually, we reduced the cost of those. But because of the portable radios mostly that were ordered, the services went up. So the subscriber cost went down, but the services for those particular units went up. Part of that, you know, like part of that will be from the school system will help us some of those costs. And I'll give you, for instance, they originally ordered for their campus safety officers, they ordered like six portables, and that went up to 10. So we reduced in other areas, but the services for those individual radios actually went up. All that's encompassed in this change order. And I think that's it. There's a cost sharing in here. Motorola has absorbed some of the cost 100%. Some of the costs are county costs that we're going to absorb. And then some of them were cost share, where Motorola paid for half and we paid for half. And those were all negotiated over a period of several months.
Any questions for David? All right, moving on to number 12, which Mr. Mumford also has. Discuss action to approve the change order to the TUSA Consulting contract in the amount of $212,800 to extend their services through December 31, 2025. And the funding is SPOST funds.
And this is related to agenda item number 11. TUSA is our consulting company that we've contracted with for this project. It's a huge project. They've done these projects all over the country, and that's one of the reasons they were chosen to assist the county. Their original contract would have ended in July, and they've been working with us continuously. We need to extend their services through the end of December now because the project is being extended. And so the cost to extend the project for TUSA's contract is $212,800. One of the good things about this is that we haven't used all the funds that were allocated to their original contract. So there's still over $100,000 that was not spent on the original contract. So, you know, that brings their cost for this. If you count what we haven't spent, it brings it down to like $112,800. But we... They've saved us a lot of money in this. They've caught errors that should have been corrected. They've caught those when they did their inspections. They've helped us negotiate with Motorola. They've been invaluable during this process, and we'd like to continue their services through December.
Any questions?
You said we haven't paid some that was in the budget. Do we pay them by the hour, or how does that work? Or is it...
They charge us by hour and travel expenses.
Okay.
And, yeah, so they send us an invoice every month for what they've charged to us for that month.
Okay.
And so because of the project delays, we haven't used up all the other amount that was originally budgeted.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, David. Item 13 is discuss action to approve the purchase of Parks and Certified rebuild one site with OEM parts and Parks and supervision in the amount of $126,512. This purchase is funded through the renewal and extension fund and is located in Post 1 and Post 3. Mr. Ray Whitten.
Good morning.
Good morning.
In our headworks, our screens, our rotary drum screens, they protect the membranes that process the water coming through our facility. What has happened on some of our screens is we've actually had some damage that has occurred to them. Parks and is the rep that makes the screens and supplies them, and we've got certain warranties with them. And so we got a quote from Parks and to repair those screens. But instead of having them do the work, which would be more expensive, they're going to have a supervisor, a Parks and crane, all Parks and parts. But it's actually our staff that will be making the repairs to save money and to get more acclimated with the equipment, working under a Parks and rep. But we need these screens to be repaired in order to actually protect all the membranes that are inside the plant. And we're requesting that the board approve us to go ahead with the repair. And in the quote that you see back behind here, it would be item 2B. And that repair cost would be $126,512. And that repair cost would be $126,512.
We use Parkson before?
Yeah. Parkson is the rep that actually produces and makes them, and the reason we're using Parkson again is to maintain the additional warranties on the drum screens themselves.
Any other questions? All right, you got the next one also, Ray. Number 14 is discuss action to approve the purchase of a new vertical turbine pump, 150 horsepower soft start and installation startup of the equipment, Pond Two. And this is with Goforth Williamson Incorporated in the amount of $83,050. This purchase is funded through the Renewal and Extension Fund, is located in post one and three.
The Copper Mine wastewater facility has a land application system that's associated with it, and they produce reuse water that goes to be sprayed onto reuse fields. We have a Pond One and a Pond Two that both supply water to the fields. Pond One goes into one area, sections one and two. Pond Two handles the other seven fields. What has happened is on Pond Two, we have liners that protect the bottom of these ponds, usually with a gunite layer to make sure the water doesn't seep through into the soil in Pond One or Pond Two. Part of that liner has ripped to come to the surface in Pond Two. This pump that is being designed will allow us from Pond One to send the same flow to the areas and reuse fields that Pond Two currently serves. And it will give us the ability to send flow to both areas once we get this new pump, and that will allow us to draw down Pond Two and make any repairs necessary we need to on Pond Two. So the pump is to give us the ability to pump further to hit the areas that were covered by Pond Two. So we're requesting to purchase a new pond, a new pump that takes the flow from Pond One, along with all the equipment, to run that vertical turbine pump. I hope I did get, if you have any questions, I know I may not have explained it the best in the world, but it allows, with this pond being out, for the pump to go into two directions from this pond. So.
Everybody got it? County manager pass out the test? All right, moving to 15. You got that one also, sir. Discuss action to approve an emergency purchase from Goforth Williamson Incorporated in the amount of $220,567. And this is for the Oakley Point Pump Station. And this purchase is funded through the Renewal and Extension Fund, is located in just post one. Mr. Ray Wooten again.
Okay. I'm sure you're probably hearing a lot from me today. We, the Oakley Pump, Pump Station, Oakley Point Pump Station is, is a dual-stage pumps where you have four pumps in one pump station. And it's an older design that we've had to move pumps side to side in order to make the pump station function for the pumps pump up to another set of pumps. And finally, that station has failed. Currently, we're bypassing that station, and what we're proposing to do is to replace, rehab the entire station with two new Modi pumps, soft starts and full electrical. And with the new Modi pumps, it will enable that station to be more effective and act as a normal pump station and give it the head that it needs to pump into the line that joins with the first main that comes from East Paulding Pump Station. But we're basically building a new pump station where the old pump station existed, using the frame, but the internal will all be new. And so we're requesting for, we're presenting to you for your approval to go ahead and rehab with new pumps, VFDs, electric equipment. It costs $220,567. And right now, we have this pump, this pump station is being bypassed, the entire station is. So.
Is it down right there?
Excuse me?
Down right there?
It's down. It's fully bypassed, and we're also adding a little spray to make sure when you're fully bypassing a pump station, you occasionally get some additional flavor in the air. So we've got some additional equipment out there to address that. So to keep everyone happy.
How long do you anticipate it being done?
As soon as we can get this equipment in place. The Modi pumps are pretty quick. I'm figuring we'll probably bypass it here for a couple of months. And like I said, we are doing additional things to take care of the odor, but it's all within the current fencing that we have. So hopefully after the first couple of months, we will be redoing the electrical work and dropping the pumps, and I'm hoping before Christmas, everybody's happy.
Additional questions?
Ray, we replace a lot of these pumps. Are they generally put in by the builders or some developer of some sort? And do, is that the case?
In this particular case, it is. We have six gentlemen that are together that go to pump station to pump station, and if it's just replacing a pump, guys are smart, you know, they're able to put it together. They don't lose a step. In this case, they're actually going down in the bottom, replacing the 90s that feed the pumps and redoing the entire electrical. So in this case, we have Goforth Williamson doing the majority of the work. But just dropping a pump, we're spot on.
So do we have a standard that we require for builders and developers as they're putting in these things so that we're not doing repairs all the time? I mean, we kind of are, but I mean, to kind of limit our liability there in the future.
What we've done in our new pump station ordinance, we have defined every piece of equipment, every pump that we use, so that everybody's going to be spot on and that everything matches everything else to make it more consistent. So it's standard work. But yes, we have put that in the new sewer ordinance.
Okay, great. I have a very important Shakespearean question on number 13. It seems like we're going to have to vote on to be or not to be.
Oh, yes, too dear. That is the question.
Had to say that. That is the question, isn't it?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
That's the conclusion of regular business. We have a gentleman who has signed up to sign to speak on non-agenda item, Mr. Lawrence Miller is going to speak on the rock quarry located out in post two.
Good morning, Chairman David Carmichael and the rest of the commissioners. I'm Lawrence Miller, of course, and I'm a resident of Paulding County, Georgia, post two. I'm here, I'm here today to express the continuing concerns that a large group of residents regarding the two quarries in post two and the third quarry that's being proposed, which is soon to go to planning and zoning this afternoon. I've emailed the commissioners at, commissioners@paulding.gov numerous times, but I wanted to specifically discuss two emails. On August 6 of this year, an email with the subject line of "Dangerous industrialization of our community against homeowners' constitutional rights." In 1987, blasting ordinance was created. As you might know or may not know, the Fifth Amendment intentionally protects against governmental actions that unreasonably interfere with the use of enjoyment of private property by continually permitting the operation of additional industrial facilities, particularly we're talking about rock quarries. With inadequate noise ordinances and approving more rock quarries without adequate noise control measures, the county is failing to uphold these constitutional protections based upon what will be read in the Constitution of the United States. Number two, on August 18, another email, subject request for creation of frequency of blast ordinances with consideration of peak particle velocity, which is called PPV, which measures the amount of blasting. Anyone who have seen a blasting, there's pressure that comes from blasting, which affects anything around it. After researching Paulding County zoning ordinances, I found that we allow up to three blastings per week. With two blast, with two quarries already in the area, that's six times a week, times four is 24 blastings per month that can be allowed, which is, we can have blasting every day of the week, basically if you have a five-week month. Blasting activities generate ground vibrations, again, which is PPV, a critical indicator of the potential damage to nearby structures, which I resided in nearby structure myself. According to the United States Bureau of Mines, the USBM, cosmetic damage to residential structures typically occur at PPV levels of .5 inches per second. However, excuse me, even at lower PPV, even at lower PPV levels such as our Paulding County ordinances in Chapter 18 Building and Buildings Regulations in Article 7 Blasting Operation State, no blasting shall be detonated, which cause a monitoring seismograph. A seismograph is what is used to monitor the blasting PPV range. Being utilized by the consultant, the consultant is the person who, or the company that does the blasting, it should not detect a reading greater than .25, which is half, which is half of what is considered damage by the US blasting, USBM. However, at .25 or lower, United States Bureau of Mining, Article 8507, RI 8507, also notes that the frequency, again, the frequency of blasting plays a critical role in the potential damage. Frequent blasts, as I mentioned, three times, up to three times a week per quarry is six times a week, times four is basically almost every day of the week. Even with lower PP values can lead to increased structural stress and potential settlement issues as well as cracking in foundation, wells and interior finishes such as drywall, concrete basements, concrete foundations, wells and everything else I've mentioned earlier on. And this also is documented by scholars, and the information is in "Structural Response Damage Produced by Growth Ripration from Surface Mine Blasting by the United States Bureau of Mines Report of Investigation 8507." We are urging that the commission listen to the community for the sake of our health, safety and to protect our homes. Thank you for your time and opportunity to speak today.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. We don't have an executive session this morning, so it's a time when commissioners can advertise something, celebrate something. Anybody got anything today? Hearing none, we, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned by Commissioner Kaker. I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We stand adjourned.